Call this meeting over, please. Name of the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's just begin with the connotations and consolidations. I see that our first appointment is not from out of there.
I'm going to approve the connotations and consolidations.
Say it.
Move and seconded, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes. State qualifications and settlements? Yes. Down in the agenda, you'll see that we have that little cultural state final settlement. We'll move that up to her work. Jane, I didn't hear your explanation that the judge sent it back.
He accepted the accounting. He accepted the accounting, but you didn't do a final account, a final settlement. You didn't approve it or reject it for the final settlement.
Says either close the estate or not.
So, and then if you approve it for settlement, then if they object to it, then they have to take it upstairs again.
If we don't approve it for settlement?
Or even if you don't approve it.
It's got to go upstairs.
It's got to go upstairs, period.
If we don't approve, it's got to go upstairs.
Either one. If any objections comes before, either you settle it or you don't. It goes upstairs. No longer will come through the commission. He just needs to know if you're going to either approve the final settlement or not.
What went?
I approved the final settlement. Why didn't we start with?
There were errors in it, within the accounting before.
Right. The reason we didn't before was questions of the...
Accounting of the...
Is that, is that a letter from the judge?
Yes, sir.
That's the order.
I have, I have the same batch. Did you send this to him? Settle that name?
Yeah.
We're from the SEC here.
All we approved was to...
Accept it.
We just approved the findings of the fiduciary commissioner.
We accepted, yeah, we accepted.
Yeah, we didn't accept, yeah, we didn't accept the settlement of the state.
No, no, I guess that's what the judge is...
That's what he wants, get it, accept or not accept.
But we need to ask Jerry.
Jerry says, because I asked him about this, and he says that you can approve what she presented. I've already asked him. He says that he doesn't see a reason why you couldn't approve it. And the reason it went to court is because he has to pay a fee for the bond, and I'm not sure how much it is. And he's wanting to be able to get up and under that, because he has to pay it every year. And it's actually due in November again. And he's wanting the estate, so I think Jerry might be up here.
Oh, see it's there. Cattle are falling hard.
Like a brick.
Yeah, what?
Like a brick.
Yeah. I mean, they're still high compared to what we ever knew, but they're all eighty or ninety cents.
Well, it's hard for me to determine exactly what he wants, so... What's your take on it, sir, compared to our...
I'm a little confused.
I didn't know.
See, me and Kate, maybe we should close the estate. How much we got options?
He can't come over, he's in... And I talked to Linda also, and she said you can, we can present that. You either accept it or you don't. One way or another.
I remember what she said the last time she was here.
My opinion, the only person that is going to object would be Marleya, because the other three is wanting to settle.
Has anyone questioned the fiduciary's findings?
Just the executor. And that's why he took it to court, is because he said that...
That he's had ample time to provide, and that lets them prove otherwise.
And he hasn't, no, that he...
And he hasn't.
But I wonder what's your chances of getting Liza on the phone, or...
She's next door, too.
She can't come either?
No, she's answering the phone for the magistrate's office today.
Well, that's just...
We'll just put it off.
Yeah, then we'll just put it off on it.
There's Jerry, right here.
Quick. You want to know what the Georgia judge wants?
Yes.
Either thumbs up or thumbs down. Approve the settlement or not approve the final settlement.
So we do have to...
Thumbs up or thumbs down, yes you do. And you've got advice from your fiduciary commissioner, and you have my response.
I don't know the reason.
You do, you have my response.
Well, I would think we would accept that, like that for the bond itself.
Why don't you begin their executive session?
Say it.
All in favor say aye.
We're back in the regular session, no action was taken in executive session. So still not approved?
I would move that we do not approve the settlement of the little cultural state due to the arguments put forth by the fiduciary commissioner supported by our counsel.
Move and seconded, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes, unanimous.
I would move that we approve the state qualifications and settlements.
Say it. Move and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes. Okay, gentlemen, you have any board appointments at this time?
No, sir.
Budget revisions.
Not many bears on Leaning Creek Bay.
No pictures yet, but a lot of people in the store getting bear pictures.
No, we're loaded, I mean loaded.
Seems to be more on the southern end of the county.
Yeah, weather always has been, but, I mean, it's, we're loaded.
Your terrain's a little more rough over in that area.
Well, it is, it's, it's, it's much easier to, I guess, to hide. You know, you take Lewis County, there's portions of it that play better than the best part of Young County, and it's...
Full air.
Yeah. It won't be a couple of years, I don't think, until they're absolutely everywhere and they become complete distance.
Good morning, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the budget revisions as presented.
Say it.
Move and seconded, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes. Well, we were waiting for voices at the end, gentlemen, like we've been doing. County commission minutes.
I move we approve the county commission minutes for eighteenth of September, two thousand fifteen, as presented.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes. Clark?
Aye.
It was a short one. September eighteenth. Okay, we're to receive the county board minutes, the August eighteenth meeting of the Parks and Recreation, the August twenty-fifth meeting of Westmont Tower C and D. Here for public review. Let's move on to unfinished business. The USC RRA claim. I move that we approve the settlement agreement and release of the USC RRRA Uniformed Service Employment Reemployment Right Act claim presented by Daniel Husker. Yes. Well, it would be for the that Uniformed Service Employment Reemployment Right Act claim.
Okay.
And the state, please, in the motion?
In the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Say it.
Move and seconded, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes. Any other unfinished business, gentlemen? Under new business, and we just took action on the rural cultural state. The next thing is progress report from two thousand fifteen, S E R C grant. S E R C. Tell me what that remind me.
I'm not really sure what one it is, what it is, though I just have the, it's a grant that the emergency services were doing, I think it's emergency service. And they didn't use all of their money. Or, sorry, it's LEPC. It's an LEPC grant.
That's just a mistake there, you're saying.
Evidently, because I don't know, Martin just gave this to me. He just said, we have to send money back. And then Angel gave me the report of how much we had to send back, which was seven hundred and fifty-three dollars.
It's a CIR grant for the LEPC.
Okay. I don't... He just handed to me and said, here.
Martin's chair, that is.
Yeah.
Well, they did, evidently the money was spent upfront.
Yes.
They didn't spend it.
They didn't spend all of their, I think it was a thousand dollars or something, or two thousand or something that they had to spend. They didn't use it all, so they had to send it back.
Thirty thousand dollars.
We talk about money for them? Well, Martin's son, he's the chair of the LEPC. The motion would be in order to return seven hundred and fifty-three dollars to CIR so it wouldn't be used in an LEPC grant. Move and seconded, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes. Any other new business? Let's go ahead and get started on some loose deals.
I did tend the Westport, Westport Conservation District.
How was that?
It was pretty good. Our two representatives, that's Kanawha, and Jane Coleman's going to that perfect attendant at the meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't the farmer or anything like that for winter.
What county was the farmer?
Around about the...
The grassland farmer, the Hupman farmer, Harrison and Harrison. Farmer Jones was a woodland cooperator, and they have a hundred-year, your farm's been in there for a hundred years. That was Terry and Helen Hardman out of those county.
Had to be in the same family?
Yeah.
Same family for a hundred years? What you have these?
No.
Backstage.
How many heifers you keeping there?
Sixteen new ones, new in the spring. Kept.
You got anything to produce from the river?
Not of any quality. Yeah, this is aged.
Yeah, that's not...
Maybe seventy-two dollars this episode. Yes, it should. Jane, what you guys have?
Yeah, two.
It's seven cows. One head.
A pound.
Yeah, it's a pound.
Only hay.
None to waste, still cutting.
Yeah. I'd like to see just a little bit more good weather.
Looks like next week, beginning Monday.
How many days?
Could be as many as six or seven.
This time of year, you need at least four to five.
Yeah. Jane, Tom. They didn't calculate on that, should be seventy-two, it's got seventy-seven. We all agree to approve.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike, there.
Can I open that window?
Please do.
I'm about to roast it here.
Looks like the air is staying in here, too.
You've seen there's a lot of hot air.
Without, no, but it seems to stay.
Kind of like being on an airplane.
I've never been on an airplane.
Have you never been on an airplane?
No, sir.
Well, I'm surprised, because we're older than you.
Yeah, I am, yeah.
All those things, so...
That's a canoe.
Is that starting?
No. They were musky fishing in that hole in the river there below your house a week ago. And I do believe there's more river otters there than any one place I've ever seen in my life. There won't be any fish at all in there. They'll have them all. You know, there's things up in Scare Creek over there. Of course, the water tables dropped tremendously, and the creek's filled in just a little bit. They've absolutely wiped out whole sections.
Really?
Yeah, where there's, I mean, there's nothing in there but just few hand fish.
Yeah.
I think that was a terrible blunder by those.
Decision made.
By the DNR, I think it was a terrible one. They brought those things and introduced them here, and our waterways were just easy picking for them, you know?
Well, I asked the guys, this question's coming out of CIR's budget. We put money in there for just as last year and just as the year before.
You say one would...
She doesn't want it to.
She just, she says it doesn't come out of her budget, but she was given money last year for that, and then we gave her, you guys gave her the same amount this year.
Came out of the last year?
I don't see how anything's changed.
No, either.
Jane, why are all these other invoices attached to this? This is our monthly nine-one-one, or no, dispatching fee, twenty-nine sixteen. So why are all these others?
These are the checks that come through us.
Nine-one-one.
Yes, that we, that we issue to...
They're talking about lowering that charge, gentlemen. But one time, two years ago, they did, they had surplus in, for dispatching services. I've never heard anything talked about. Don't you actually mean ask Bill if there's any, we didn't meet the last... Yeah, we could get a form.
I think you'll see the state dipping into that harder and harder now with the way the oil and gas is.
Speaking of oil and gas, I'm sure I would want to call, moving on, receiving oil and gas, that sounds...
That is good. What this is, is that Striker that's in that door over there that you guys have talked about before.
Why this mark thirteen hundred down?
Because they had charged for two months.
Oh. Oh.
That goes together, Larry, those two pages there.
Is that?
Yeah.
And, yes.
These are rates, Mr. Stone.
Instead of tomorrow, it's just three hours. I think this morning when I checked it was like forty-five percent at like three.
Yeah.
In the afternoon and then it just went up as evening long.
It appears that you all reviewing this jail bill, there were overcharges in the amount of just a few dollars shy of two thousand dollars. They meant, that's ten percent, they, it seems to be happening every month, that they overcharge and you go back in and.
I go to Karen and Linda and have them to check their records when they were to go be charged by the state. And then I email them until they take care of it. At one point, they were not responding to any emails, but that was sending.
You wonder how many counties it slips right on by.
That just paid.
There's a lot of counties that has an actual person that they hire that does nothing but that.
But that.
And then they also keep an eye on the court dates. And if they think they've been in there too long, they go to the judge and say, listen, this person has been in there too long, we need to get him on a hearing and get him out of there.
I think you keep reviewing them because that's two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You're right, though, I've been a lot of counties did get overcharged. Yes, and came coming out there, they like, it was something new, they must have.
I can't remember what county it was, but they actually have a person that does that and then they watch all of the hearing things and they keep an eye on who's in jail. And if it's been so long, they keep talking to the judge and get everything moved up as quick as they can. You know, all the kind of stuff.
Hello?
Well, no, it's not our list.
Well, it's nine thirty and we have an appointment for sale. Laura, how are you this morning?
How are you?
Good.
We have the Gilmore County Health Department and I have actually two confirmations I'll read you on, and I need you to sign them, but at the moment I'll go to many email them. Because they also do the PCCSP program for the breast and cervical, I'll lay this in there, and then I'll be, this will be, I'm happy to sign up. This is the West Virginia Breast Cancer Wearers Day, Breast Cancer Wearers Month. In two thousand fifteen, an estimated one thousand three hundred and sixty West Virginia women will be diagnosed with breast cancer and approximately two hundred and seventy-six women will die from the disease. Breast cancer continues to be a leading cause of cancer-related deaths among West Virginia women. A woman, excuse me, has about a one in eight, twelve percent chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime and about a one in thirty-six, three percent chance of dying from the disease. Currently, the best method to reduce deaths due to breast cancer is through early detection of the disease. Women age fifteen or should have a mammogram at least every two years, women ages forty to forty-nine should talk with their health provider about their screening schedule. Clinical breast exam by physician or nurse are recommended every three years for women in their twenties and thirties and every year for women forty and over. Breast self-exam is an option for women starting in their twenties, women should be told about the benefits and limitations of breast self-exam. Clinical breast exam, breast self-exams and mammograms can save lives, women should talk to their health provider about their individual screening schedule. And at the bottom, it just says, you all.
Motion to adopt proclamation.
So moved.
Moved in second, leave discussion on papers say aye, aye, opposed name motion passes. Yeah, Gina told us earlier, she's working on her read.
Okay, I'll let that spread into work.
Okay. Where do you want me to send it up to?
Can I send it up right now?
Okay.
I was told she would talk to me today about it.
Thank you, thank you, buddy. Look at that.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you, Terry.
Hi, John.
How you got, Brian?
Brian, I'm Terry Myers with the Test and Associates.
Yeah. How many more bills you have there? We've got five minutes.
Not a lot.
Let's finish them off. Those are the ones already been paid. Now, those are the ones to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got about five minutes. I asked you if you got sure of the children.
Oh, man.
I'm taking a little bit of hay, man.
We're feeding. Hers is moving them off the hill and putting them all together to feed the feed barn.
Okay, any other issues to set?
We had about thirty-five rollers, we took one in, uh, in matter this year, we cut them and think long for short, therefore at the end, before it got really where it needed to be, weather changed. So we went ahead and rolled them up and we're all kind of scared, so we left it outside instead of putting it in the dry. The outside of it looks weathered, the inside of it's not moldy, but it doesn't necessarily smell like good real Paulier. But I assure you one thing. Those cows, it's crazy, there's something in there that's just a little bit sour because they absolutely, they go after that stuff like it's eating them.
Second or third day?
Second. We didn't get.
Put up a day early.
It was put up there early. And it didn't mold, as far as mold goes, but it must have turned just enough.
Sometimes mold makes hard ones.
Yeah, some.
All right.
I'm going to approve the invoices for payment.
Set. You have a mail on that, Brian?
Hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
It's been moved in second, but any discussion on papers say aye, opposed name motion passes you now. Come on down by your camera. You're on two bucks on the rest across the road, about getting probably six points or something. Morning. How are you, Sally?
Oh, Bill.
Oh, yeah. Hello, guy.
John?
How you doing?
This up guy's sneaking in, uh, here. How long's he hanging?
I believe he was off to nothing.
That's the guy with the checkbook.
Yeah. That's why I'm hot.
It's just that there's not much in the checkbook.
Oh, here, I stole that one.
Now I gotta bring Jack ahead, I forgot I had to give him a hat.
Those much hairs he's got on top of his head, he doesn't need.
Well, I'd say he probably wants a candlestick, I'm just guessing.
I can make jokes like that.
You want to start, Shane, you want me to? Go ahead. Commissioners, thank you for having us up here, I'm Terry Myers with the Test and Associates, our firm has been procured through 5G with the Gilmore County Public Service District to represent them on what we're calling the Tanner New Bern Waterline Extension. Uh, we're gonna, we're going to be connecting to the Glenville system at the mouth of a sinking road here. We're gonna go back through the back road, this is the road that the Tammy lives on, if you know the girl that works for Freeman, she lives back in here. When we, and then we're gonna go all the way over to the Tanner community, we go up Tanner Hollow Road.
I don't need to interrupt.
No, you can interrupt.
That's not Saint Creek where Tammy works at Longview.
Is it going up Saint?
I'm just going by the name.
Does it go up Saint?
What road do you live on?
Back across.
Hickory Hall.
Yes.
So it goes up sinking, cuts over the hill.
Yes, and I did, I did that because I drove both roads, I drove the main road and I drove the back road before I was ever hired by these guys. And if you go the main road, you got miles of nobody. And there's nobody going up the hill and there's nobody going downhill, there's two people in Dodge on the hill. And the most cost-effective way to get water to Tanner was to go to that back road, you'll pick up a whole lot more customers. So that's why we did it that way. Uh, I know you're, I know everybody in your mind, it's like, well, why wouldn't you go to the main road, but that's the reason. And we're going eight tenths of a mile up the main road to pick up those first few families, okay? And I'm getting ready to give you a cost estimate, and in that cost estimate right now, we have a hydro pneumatic booster station and a two-inch line coming back up the main road to get to those two houses that are on top of the hill. But it's extremely expensive just to take care of those two families. Now, we have presented the board with the least expensive way to take care of those people. We will build, we're gonna build a tank up here on the, on the hill, we'll have a booster station, and then we're gonna have a pressure reducing station down in, uh, down in Tanner. And it's gonna be a dual reducing station, we'll have a higher pressure going out the main road here than we do going up Tanner Hollow. Because we don't need that much pressure, when we get to the main intersection down in Tanner, we're gonna be at a hundred and seventy-five pounds. And we need that in order to get all the way over here and provide fire flow. Uh, we've got about eighty, ninety thousand feet of pipe on the project, half of that is gonna have to be eight inch if the decision is made to provide the fire flow. Uh, we've tried it every which way but loose to keep it six inch and we just, we just couldn't do it. Uh, I've presented the board with the, with all the different options, if we put in the eight inch, they're gonna have to blow this line off pretty often because there's just not enough customers to keep that water fresh out there. But, but that provides fire protection, you go back to the six, you don't have the fire protection, then you don't have the fresh, so that it's, you know, it's kind of a double edged sword. But, uh, we are in the process of presenting all these different options to the board. We are here today to present you with the worst case, with the most, you know, taking care of everything, fire protection, taking care of the two people up on the hill. There's two small extensions that we've got in this project, one is out Route seventy-four to pick up the last few people that didn't get picked up on the Cox's Mill project. And then there's a small extension on Sycamore Run, okay? So the estimate that I'm getting ready to give you here is a project that's gonna run eight point seven million dollars. It will serve a hundred and eighty families. And here is a, uh, project map that hopefully your trifocals, if you're like me, will work and you can read it. And here's one for you, Shane. I'm not gonna tell you that the project scope might not change just a little bit, that's, that's, that is the decision that the, that the board will make here soon. What we're here to request is that you sponsor this project, uh, for a small city's block grant. And that's why Shane's here and, uh, this, this project, this project won't fly with at least, without at least getting that, that million and a half. And we intend to throw our name in a variety of different hats, uh, to try to, uh, limit, uh, the impact on the rates. Uh, and, and there's some, there's a variety of options that we'll be looking at for that. Uh, is this, is this a scary number? Unfortunately, in today's world, eight point seven million dollars just doesn't shake me up anymore. Twenty-five years ago, it was like, are you serious, but today, as Shane, I mean, uh, a lot of the projects are five, six million dollars because everywhere where there were twenty-five, thirty customers per mile in the state, they all have water now. You know, you're, you're, everybody throughout the whole state, uh, is, is now getting to the outbound areas where you sometimes only have ten, twelve people per mile. And, uh, and, and the cost is, is getting up there. Uh, but we just, that's, that's the bottom line, the board is here, uh, enforced, all three of them are here, and John's here and Shane and I. And we're just requesting that you guys, uh, sponsors for small cities block grant.
The reason they're asking the county commission, if you remember, you guys have been very helpful in, with the district in sponsoring previous projects because those funds have to run through the local unit of government and therefore, that's why we're requesting the county commission to sponsor that. The deadlines for that have not been announced, I would suspect they'd be in April or May. Um, as in the past, you know, we'll assist the district and you folks and do everything that's required to do the application. So that's, will still be the case with this one, so.
Motion would be in order to sponsor this water line extension, is that moved?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion, all papers say aye, aye, opposed name motion passes. Question, you said something a while ago I've often wondered about, you talked about water being fresh, what's considered fresh? Oh, man. I mean, you said you would have to.
What happens, what happens?
Okay, well, what happens is that. Turnover.
If you don't get the turnover, eventually the chlorine dissipates, okay? And then when John goes out at the end of the line, he takes a test, if he doesn't have the minimum chlorine residual, which is what, point oh two? Point oh two. Okay, if he doesn't have that, then his sample, when he sends it into the health department, he's gonna come back and they're gonna say, hey, you don't have enough chlorine, you gotta put everybody on, on boiled water. He's gotta go out and flush the line, get some fresh chlorine in there, and that, that's what I'm talking about. Is the, is the water gonna kill you? Probably not, you know, last summer, I stirred up everybody's water in this town probably forty times. In case anybody didn't know, I'm a guy guilty of doing that, but that rusty minerally looking coffee water wouldn't have killed you, just wouldn't have tasted very good. But it was just all the stuff that was built up in the pot. I gotta ask the other day, how many parts per million of other things other than the pure water is acceptable? What standard do we go by?
That is actually regulated by the Bureau of Public Health. And the list is really, really long.
Yes.
That's a, that's a, no offense, but that's a real broad question.
Okay, I didn't.
There's a, there's a gazillion things, they have to test for lead, they have to test for all kinds of different metals, and all of that is done at the Glenville Water Plant.
Yeah. Uh, each year, we have to put a consumer confidence report, local utility's got to put out one and we've got to put out one, if you'd like a copy of that, we've got it. No, I just, the, the question was. No, I just, the, the question was, opposed to me.
It gives you the, the breakdown of what's allowed and, and what the systems are at. And this fresh question is why we put blow-offs. You know, a lot of the, a lot of times that when you're going up a hollow, the last thousand or two thousand feet of it might just be two-inch line. And there might just be one or two people on that line. That water is not gonna stay fresh. They're just, they're just not gonna use enough water. So you always have a blow-off at the end so that you can, you can blow that water off and, and freshen that water up. And, and, and that's the reason.
And the time would vary depending on the size of the line.
Yeah, yes.
It might be once a week, it might be once every two weeks.
That's a true story. And, and, and no one will really know the answer to that until the system is built, the customers start using it, and John gets out there and starts taking samples.
I noticed on this, how close does the end of this Tanner-Newburn line and the seventy-four line, it almost appears to intersect?
Well, they do on that because I, see, see, see my little scribble marks?
Yeah.
Okay, well, the guy's got a little optimistic in my CAD department and connected the lines when he shouldn't have. There's a mountain in between those two.
Okay.
And we are not crossing that mountain that too. There, there's not the pressure to do that. Okay? Now, we are getting water to the church. There's a church as you go up the hill. There's a church up there. We are getting water to that church, but that's it. That's as far as we go. And then we're, and then we're picking up over on the, on the Cox's Mill side. Let's see, right here. And then, and it, and it, and it's not even on here, but it's on a later-dated one. But we're going out, out through here and picking up these houses here. The only thing that hasn't been, the decision that hasn't been made, and we still have to run the hydraulics, is there is a half a mile of four-inch.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. About half a mile of four-inch that was put in on the Cox's Mill project. And we don't, we don't put more, anyone less than six. So we'll, we'll be putting six out through here. But what we've got to find out is, is that they were told that they couldn't get fire protection in here, so they put four-inch in. So I don't know if we'll end up replacing that with six. We've gotta run hydraulics on this existing system and see if there, if we agree. And if there's anything we can do in order to get fire protection up there, maybe that we can't. But the difference between four and six, or six and eight, is just the cost of difference in the material. Because you still have to dig the same trench. You know, and, and that's really a minor cost. So we put in two-inch and six-inch, uh, or eight-inch. We, we don't, we don't put any three- or four-inch pipe in, uh, with the rim. Because you're either gonna have fire flow or you're not. So it's about it. Any other?
It's hard to believe that in nineteen eighty-six, other than the Van Horn Drive and maybe a quarter a mile out Mineral Road, there were no public water lines in the county.
Well, you can see what this group right here has done.
Pardon, Bill?
Nineteen ninety, really, when the PSD was formed.
Was the PSD, was the Canal Drive project, though, was it, it was, it was after the PSD was...
No, it was before.
It was before.
It was a government utility.
Yeah, it was Global Utility.
Right.
Well, I knew in nineteen eighty-six, that was the first one that I had figured out. It was Canal Drive. Of course, you talk about the cost, that cost every time you put water line in the ground, the cost per household because of, because you're taking care of those people first.
We, when I first came back to West Virginia in nineteen ninety, we were doing projects that were running anywhere from eight to twelve thousand dollars a customer. You know, and now, now we're, now we're looking at forty-nine thousand dollars a customer. If you look at the last line of that spreadsheet I gave you.
I would think that Canal Drive down that way was seventy-eight hundred. And you all probably remember the Troy and the Sanford, you know, it just keeps...
How is it that, how are these projects come about? And do people in the community, were people in the hollow, were people, uh, how, how do they...
Jack has already been around to this community and, and had people sign a petition to, to find out if there was enough interest to make it worthwhile to go after.
Right. Well, I, I just was asking because in the southern end of the county, I've been asked about it two or three times. And I, uh, as recently as last week, and I wasn't sure, I told him to contact you all because I wasn't sure how it came about as far as, like, that steer run area and peak places that have bad, there is bad water over the county.
Yeah, it's how, so I've been, Cox's Mill, I just took a petition around.
I remember, wouldn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then Jack done Tanner. I don't know who done the others, whether it was just a, you know, a household member or whatever done the other ones. That's what I have to do, just go after them and do everything down.
And we also, when I, when I, before I, uh, my interview, I also did a, a project for, in the Cedarville area. It's just that the Tanner one was already ahead of that in the, uh, and, and this one is about, is very similar to the cost per customer. Will it be when it's built? No, it'll be more expensive because it's gonna take us a while to get this one funded. But, uh, and, and you can, you know, a PSD of this size can only do one of these, you only have one of these in the middle of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just wondering.
You still have a lot of people that want water and need water.
Yeah, the water's terrible there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, the southern end of the county.
Uh, it, it, it's just that, you know, you, everybody knows that the funds are just getting tighter and tighter and tighter.
And they're gonna get tighter.
Yes, they are. Unless, unless something else changes.
Yeah.
You know, uh, for selfish reasons on the engineering side, I hope it does change. I hope somebody gets in there and says, hey, we need to fix our infrastructure. I'd probably kiss them on the lips if they would do that.
Right. Long and short of it is, though, with, uh, revenue streaming, where it comes from and, and the way energy is right now, it's, I, I don't see any positive change coming soon.
Don't know. I always keep my hopes up, but, you know, it's, it's, it's getting tighter and tighter.
Sure.
And if it wasn't for the infrastructure money that we, that, that all, everybody jumped in and passed back in the mid-nineties, you know, this would have been a lot harder.
Yeah.
You know, they, they've continued to cycle that money. But even this, even at the state level, the forty-five thou, or forty-five mil that used to come from video lottery, that doesn't come to us anywhere, does it?
Twenty million.
It's twenty million now.
They cut it in half.
They cut it in half. So even, even the money that we were getting is, is getting nibbled away at.
Well, once again, that's what I was saying, I think you'll see it hit again. Because the, the oil and gas revenue's gonna be slim to none. I think you'll see them dipping in everywhere, but...
Brian, to answer also your question to those people, we've tried to go where we can pick up the most people, get the most bang for our buck.
Sure.
It is just a simple matter. We don't try to, to show partiality or anything, but, uh, like, this project is a big project, touching a lot of people. And the only other large place that we, that we can do this again is, like Terry said, is, uh, the Cedarville area. A lot of this, in fact, they're there. But the others are, you know, just a house here, a house there. I don't know, I'll never live to see it all. I've always said, as long as I was on the board, we're gonna try to keep a project in the, in the works to, to get it funded, which I have so far.
That's, that's happened.
But, uh, like, money is a whole issue.
Sure.
And we'll get on my soapbox just briefly. But, you know, water is still the cheapest utility with the exception of trash. I make no bones about it. I pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, so I can get five hundred channels on Tisch. Because sometimes I still can't find anything to watch. But, you know, so am I gonna, if I live out in the middle of nowhere and I have lousy water, am I gonna complain about a forty or fifty-dollar water bill? I wouldn't welcome that. And, and so those are, that's a mindset that's gotta kind of changed in some of these areas that, hey, you live out there, you love living out there, but in some instances, it's gonna be a little bit more expensive for you to live out there. And, and getting water to you is one of, one of those instances. I mean, that's just, it's just a fact that that can't be changed. I'm done.
Good to you.
Good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, it's a...
You guys do a good job. You thought my work. Bill, you're, you were one of the first members appointed?
Is it too close?
In nineteen ninety?
Calling me into it, nineteen ninety.
You must have been about twenty-one then, weren't you?
Something like that.
Yeah, twelve.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
John, good to see you. Good to see you.
Our ambulance service has a whole fleet of ambulance. I mean, they need, they need one desperately. They have about twenty-five percent of the cost of the new ones saved up.
There's only so much I can do to, I have to work for them.
But they have about twenty-five percent of the cost.
So we gotta take Martin out.
And do, and any... Any idea how much? We're, we're basing on, you know, trying to not be conservative, but on a hundred and fifty, we've got twenty-five. Somewhere between a hundred and forty-five and... Let me make a couple calls. We've got, we've got twenty-five or two. Do you have twenty-five now? Yeah. Terry, thanks, thank you. Appreciate it. Had, almost become a lucky had.
We'll see you guys later.
All right. Let me look. I'll help people too. I'll be back too. Almost all good, two SDA in a row. I thought you retired. I'm still here. Yeah. Maybe she has since then. Well, I just heard that recently that, uh, holes are called...
Smaller.
All smaller, I heard you retired. Yeah, the only problem is I'm not gonna figure that much over. But we can ask. All right, well, if you, anything you can do to help us?
Uh, we'll apply for the small cities funds probably by, and then whenever it's funded. I don't know, I couldn't tell you when that's gonna be, but probably the end of the, at the earliest will be end of two thousand sixteen, early seventeen.
It takes a while.
Yeah, it does, especially on big ones like that.
All right.
All right. I'll be in touch.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Motion to adjourn?
Moved in second, all papers say aye? We'll be back in here on the sixteenth.
If you wanna split apart if your money is down to two, or do you wanna just go for it?
They prefer that, that they split.